Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our May 3, 2022 City Council meeting. Time is 7:03 PM. Meeting is now in session. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Jillian Lutz from West Covina Hill Seventh-day Adventist Church, and Councilwoman Lopez Viado will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise, please.
Let's pray. Lord God, I thank you so much for this dedicated group of individuals who want to make this city a better place to live. I pray that you will grant them wisdom tonight. I pray that this, this meeting tonight will be a space in which lives are improved for the better. I lift up to you the city clerks that are being honored tonight, that you will bless them as they, as they go about their work. I lift up to you the Autism Awareness Month that will be proclaimed, that it will raise awareness of this important issue so that this population can be better served. And Lord, I lift up to you the various, the various nuts and bolts of the agenda, some of which are very, very pragmatic things and others which might invite a little more discussion. I pray that these discussions will be productive and civil and that your Spirit will be in this room throughout the proceedings. In Jesus' name, amen.
Right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Assistant City Clerk, roll call please.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember Tabatabai.
Present.
Councilman Wu.
Here.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Present.
Mayor Protem Diaz.
Here.
Mayor Castellanos.
Here.
City Attorney, is there anything to be reported out of closed session?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. In our presentation section of the agenda, we've got a proclamation recognizing City Clerk Week. I'd like to invite our City Clerk Nicholas Lewis to the front. Since 2005, the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world. The office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, providing the link between the citizens and their local governing body while being mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. It is most appropriate that we identify the accomplishments of the municipal clerk and recognize the week of May 1 through May 7 as Professional Municipal Clerk's Week. Nice certificate for you.
A larger one.
For your contribution to the government of the city of West Covina for many years, actually, not only as a clerk, but you've had much involvement, and we appreciate it. Here's the proclamation issued to you. Would you like to say anything?
Well, first and foremost, I'd just like to say thank you for this proclamation, but really, the, the hard work of what the city clerk's office does is really a testament to our city clerk's office, specifically here, our Assistant City Clerk, Ms. Sherek, as well as her various deputies, or my various deputies, because technically, I am the sole source of their authority. So, in any case, once again, just want to thank you for your contributions here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Nick.
I just want to say thank you for giving the time to recognize the work that the city clerk's office does, not just here in West Covina, but in the surrounding cities. Your clerk handles a lot of your day-to-day activities. We are the liaison between the council and the residents at times, and I just want to say thank you for all of your patience with our staff.
Thank you, Lisa. And yeah, Councilmember Wu would like to add something.
Lisa, I know you have thousands of public record requests, thousands of them, okay? And I know you prepare everything. I know Nick didn't do anything, and you even delivered a package to our home, and I want to thank you so, so much. Maybe we should send Nick to deliver our package in the future. Okay? Right? Okay? It's volunteer job. But thank you so much for you guys. I think this is something, thank you so much for doing all this thousand of public records to give all the so-called, okay, and public information to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to the next recognition, a certificate recognizing Autism Awareness Month. I'd like to invite Captain Cortina and Planning Commissioner Brian Gutierrez. And by the way, our elected city clerk is also a planning commissioner. So if Captain Cortina and Mr. Gutierrez would come down, please. In 1970, the Autism Society launched an ongoing nationwide effort to promote autism awareness and assure that all affected by autism are able to achieve the highest quality of life possible. In 1972, the Autism Society launched the first annual National Autistic Children's Week, which evolved into Autism Acceptance Month, AAM. We continue our efforts to spread awareness, promote acceptance, and ignite change. The Autism Society of America, the nation's oldest learning, leading grassroots autism organization, is proud to celebrate Autism Acceptance Month with its "Celebrate Differences", in quotes, campaign, designed to build a better awareness of the signs, symptoms, and realities of autism. Celebrate Differences focuses on providing information and resources for communities to be more aware of autism, promote acceptance, and be more inclusive in everyday life. So, let me go up there with you gentlemen. Anything you guys would like to say or add first?
So I don't think we're going to do it during the city manager's report, but would the appropriate time to be doing this now, or do you guys have the PowerPoint?
City manager report. City manager report.
Okay. So I guess we're gonna come back, or?
Yes, you guys will come back for this, but let me grab the certificate.
Well, we have some big news, but I guess we'll be doing that in a little later. So we'll keep the news till then. Should we mention it now? Okay. Okay. So I guess this month in May, from, I'll read a little thing about mental health and Autism Awareness Month. So from May 1 to May 31, it's Mental Health Awareness Month, and has been observed in May in the United States since 1949. The month is observed with media, local events, film screenings. Mental Health Awareness Month began in the United States in 1949 and was started by Mental Health America Organization. Every April, our nation celebrates World Autism Awareness Month, beginning with the United Nations sanctioned World Autism Awareness Day on April 2. Throughout the month, people have focus on sharing stories and providing opportunities to increase understanding and acceptance of people with autism, fostering worldwide support. In 2021, the CDC, the Centers for Disease Control, reported that approximately 1 in 44 children born today in the U.S. is diagnosed with autism spectrum, autism spectrum disorder. And so autism awareness is very important, and I'm proud to be a person who has autism Asperger's, and it exemplifies that it starts at the early age of the resources, especially the resources our state has for local families in, in our city and in our state and throughout our nation. And it's a testament that no matter where one person comes from in life, that no matter if someone has a disability or not, as long as if that person believes in themselves, that all things can be achieved. And I'd also like to thank all the parents and caregivers, caregivers, and caretakers and friends and family who know someone with autism, because it's a very challenging, it can be very challenging at times. And so anyone who's interested in getting, seeking help or resources for someone who has autism could contact the Autism Response Team at help@autism speaks.org or at 888-288-4762. And so I'm honored to talk about Autism Awareness Month, and I thank Mayor, sorry, Mayor Dario Castellanos for allowing this awareness to happen in our city and, and our council for embracing Autism Awareness Month and Mental Health Awareness Month this month. And it gives me great honor to support a program that the captain will be speaking about.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff and community. I wanted to come up here briefly to thank Commissioner Gutierrez for donating these special needs stickers that'll be available for members of the community. These stickers can be placed at a residence, and they can serve as an additional way to help first responders to be aware that they may be interacting with someone who has a physical or developmental disability and that instructions given by the first responder may not be easily understood. Additionally, in the event of a fire or other emergency, the stickers can also alert our first responders that someone may be need extra help in evacuation. The stickers will be available to the public starting tomorrow, Wednesday, May 4, and can be obtained at the Police Department Lobby, free of charge. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Cortina. Thank you, Commissioner Gutierrez. And on behalf of the city of West Covina, the certificate of recognition for your efforts and April Autism Awareness Month. I'll stand in the middle. Give that to you. If anyone would like to address the council, please fill out a yellow speaker card and submit it to the Assistant City Clerk. Assistant City Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight?
We have two speaker cards, Mayor.
Thank you.
Our first speaker is Winwin Zhang, followed by John Schumaker.
Good evening, Mayor. City council members, Assistant City Manager, staff, and everyone here and watching at home. My name is Winwin Zhang, West Covina Library Manager. West Covina Library remains closed right now for maintenance and remodeling, and there's no in-person library services available at this time, and we apologize for any inconvenience this has caused you. But we continue to provide sidewalk, home pickup and service, and also the phone service. And the service hours are Mon, not Monday, Tuesday and to Wednesday, 12 noon to 8:00 PM, and Thursday to Saturday, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And we're closed on, no service on Sunday and Monday. Book jobs, actually, for returns are open all the time. Well, this month, May, is Asian Pacific Heritage Month, and the library has a few special art activity to celebrate it. The activity for adults is to create a pop-up lotus flower. And maybe many of you know that the lotus has a significant role in many Asian cultures, where it is celebrated as a sacred symbol, food staple, and also a signifier for resilience and beauty. The activity for children is to make your own coin library. It's kind of kite. It's a cop, a cop kite? It's kite, okay, for children. And the activity for teenagers is to make your own mini lightsaber. It's kind of, activity case, the activity case with our supplies and instructions available for pickup at the library. And our activities are always very popular, so I highly recommend you reserve, reserve one by calling the library, okay? And first come, first served. And I wanted to thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to share what's going on in the library. Thank you for your time, and have a wonderful evening.
Our next speaker is John Schumaker, followed by Bill Robinson.
When I drove up tonight, I remember seeing an agenda item or something about new restrooms at City Hall. I saw that they're installed, and you eliminated that pesky problem of having to make sure they're hooked up to a sewer system. You just left them as an outhouse. So, one other thing, I want to say, Mr. Wu, we agree on something. On March 15, when we were, when the council was talking about, you know, the need for, you know, some sort of transportation system, you made the remark that the residents of our city are afraid to ride on a bus at night or to be at bus stops. I agree with you, they are. Now, let's say you do something about it. I mean, that's the challenge. You've been here almost six years now, and six years ago, people weren't afraid. So, you know, when are you going to step up and actually do something? You know, I know during your campaign, you're going to make remarks about all the wonderful things you've done. Have you signed the recall petition yet? I mean, that's just the small steps to show that you're serious about it. Or, or somebody telling you that if you do that, don't look for a higher office? Just wondering. But we do agree. People are afraid not only to ride a bus at night, they're afraid to go to State or Brothers, they're afraid to go to East One. So it's a lot more than that, and it just keeps getting worse. And, you know, you put on the big show about, you know, we need to make a change in the DA's office to do things, and then something as simple as saying, hey, I support the recall. You sit back and don't do anything. You know? One honest person right there. Didn't support the no confidence and felt that he belongs in office. I will give you credit for being honest and not playing a game of, you know, hey, oh, let's throw him out, and then, okay, can you sign? No. So, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. The 75th World Health Assembly meeting in Geneva, Switzerland, held annually, this year meets on May 22 to May 28 in Geneva. It's exceptionally important. The World Health Assembly is the decision-making body of the World Health Organization, is attended by delegations from 194 WHO member states and focuses on specific health agenda prepared by the Executive Board and legal counsel for amending international health regulations, thus becoming an international law. And there's a, there's a stealth takeover that's now occurring, giving WHO the power to declare an unending states of emergencies, identical to the CDC Emergency Use Authorization we the people have lived, lived through for the past two years. The main function of the World Health Assembly are to determine the policies of the organization. This year's proceeding consists in examining U.S. proposed amendments to the existing health regs, which will be proposed and voted on, urging that actions be continued and allowed more study, wider distribution and debate. This, this item needs to be continued. Wake up and smell the burning of our national constitution and national sovereignty that consist in the U.S. proposed amendments to WHO's existing health regs, which are to be passed May 22 through 28 by the World Health Assembly. This action will produce world governance and globalism on steroids. This is a clear and present danger which we the people must address in the next 20 days. This year's delegates might be Xavier Becerra, Lois Pace, and Benjamin Molling, their HH Homeland Security, Human Services Secretary Becerra, including dozens of their support staff. Please contact these rogue delegates, federal administrators, and urge them to forego betraying our democratic values and the betrayal of our national constitution and sovereignty. The contact for this information is Jim Roguski. He has a website, don'tyoudare.info, I believe. His phone number is 310, area code 619-8055. So in regards to the COVID and the jab, we've gone through a rough couple of years. By now, it has to be apparent to almost everyone who walks by a newsstand or turns on TV that the media are begging much too hard for more jabs. The official news propaganda is running out of gas. Health epidemics last 18 months maximum, but the political deceit and official propaganda have been horrendous and unending. Big media is concentrated and closely held, and big medicine as well, owned by powerful global interests that are unconcerned with truth or personal freedom. The values and basis of our once-democratic society is freedom, freedom of speech and expression, the freedom to roam, freedom of association, freedom to protest, freedom to explore, and freedom to petition. Freedom of religion and tolerance for others, others' views are foundational principles that we supposedly believe. Additionally, are inalienable rights that are granted to us by God only because of the fact that we are human bodies with universal rights and due process principles that are embodied in the Nuremberg Code. All of these rights have been violated recently with profound, regularly, worldwide, using public health, medical tyranny, and systematic falsehoods and lying manipulations of
You, Mr. Robinson.
... of vested interests.
We have one more speaker, Mayor.
Good evening, City Council, Bill Elliott. I just want to, I don't remember if I mentioned this last time I spoke, but gosh, it's so great not to have those partitions up here again. I mean, it feels so back to normal. It's a great thing. Great things are happening in West Covina. I love to see the center median so beautiful now, and another month when everything's rooted out, it's going to be really attractive. I love that the city is taking pride in the city, and so, good for that. Also, the West Covina Chinese American Association annual party they had the other night, you know, I was blown away how well it went off and how, how wonderfully executed it was with so many different features, and the city, you know, is renting that sportsplex again. And I love to see that. I'd love to see more annual events up there that will continue to showcase our city. And make no mistake about it, there's a lot of people that complain about West Covina, but people that don't live here, they want to live here. And that's been the case of West Covina for a very long time, and there's a lot of draw here, the bedroom community, the parks, we have just the general appeal, and we love West Covina, and we don't plan leaving anytime soon. We have an election coming up, and I noticed that, you know, it's just the primary election, but there are some very serious choices to be made on this ballot. Of course, the sheriff is running, he's under attack from the Board of Supervisors, who are very powerful. And there's many other smaller offices, and, you know, some of these people that are running for elected office, they support critical race theory. And that's the flavor of the day now with educators and school districts and superintendents, and it's a, it's a really shameful Marxist kind of approach, and it's divisive and it's destructive. I mentioned before, can you imagine what it's like being a white kid in Brian Tabatabai's class in El Monte High School? I wonder if that even exists. White people are, are waning in West Covina. We have a very small population percentage in the city. And I was talking to someone one time, and they were of the opinion that West Covina should reach out to young white families, try to bring them into the city, so we don't become so homogenous that, like other cities and surrounding us, we're, we're truly a great mix, and I love that about West Covina. But the, the extremist theories that are being supported and even showcased, and even more, is really shameful. The people don't have any idea what this is about, most people don't. They see it as a right or left thing. But one of the candidates that supports critical race theory is running for judge. And some of my friends, some of my acquaintances, some of my enemies support this man. I cannot. And I would hold up Thomas Allison as a, an ideological equal to Brian Tabatabai. He has a great smile, just like Brian. It's very disarming, and a lot of people fall for it, but they really don't know what's behind the agenda of these people. Mr. Tabatabai likes to say that he is left-leaning. Well, if he was leaning any farther left, his ear would be on the cement. And I suspect Thomas Allison is left of Brian Tabatabai. So I really hope everybody thinks carefully about who they vote for and when they vote, and what they're really supporting. And critical race theory is such a scourge, such a Marxist ideology, has no place in American society. You know, everything is not the fault of white people. You cannot lay the blame of everything wrong in this country connecting it to race, and then ultimately, it's my grandson's fault. Just doesn't make any sense. Thank you for listening, and see you next time.
Thank you. Any more speakers?
No, Mayor.
More speakers? Our city manager, David Carver, he's out today. So Assistant City Manager Roxanne Lerma, is there, are there any public comments you'd like to respond to?
Thank you, Mayor. Through the chair, if I may, I just want to first thank the public for coming out and expressing their viewpoints and opinions during public comment. Winwin, thank you for providing us again with an update regarding library services, phone services, curbside pickup, and then, of course, the activities and supplies that are available at the library, of course, on a first come, first served basis. So thank you for continuing to come and to share that with the community. Mr. Schumaker, thank you for expressing your concerns regarding public safety and public transit. We do have an update regarding our transit service evaluation. It is item number seven on tonight's agenda. Steve Wilks, a consultant with the IBI Group, is here this evening to share the results of that survey with all of you this evening. And then, of course, Mr. Robinson, thank you for continuing to share your observations and concerns regarding public health and providing the community with a reminder of the World Health Assembly taking place in Geneva, Switzerland, May 22 through May 28. That concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. And do you have a city manager's report to provide to us?
No problem. Give us just a moment.
Here we go.
Perfect. So we'd like to let the community, as well as let the city council know, that we do have some vacancies on our commission, and we would like to invite the community to take an opportunity to take an opportunity to apply to sit on one of our various commissions or committees. The Senior and Community Services Commission has a vacancy. Human Resources Commission has a vacancy. And of course, the Audit Committee has a vacancy. The city of West Covina looks forward to public participation and input. And if we do have interested members of our community who would like to apply to be a part of any of these committees or commissions, we encourage them to visit our governmentjobs.com, which is available at our city of West Covina website.
Next slide, please.
Yes, sir.
And can you tell them how much we pay? Because a lot of people apply, it's a full salary. So you need to tell them it's a volunteer job.
There is a small stipend. However, the payment that people receive really is the good works that you do and the ability to make the positive impact.
Yeah.
It is mainly volunteer.
I got a resume, they're asking for $70,000 salary. Okay, and I think you should tell them the community service paying $25 per meeting. And Audit Committee, no pay, no stipend at all. Okay, and HR, do we pay HR? Maybe none.
I don't think they get it.
No, so HR doesn't have, so only community service is $25 per meeting. And we should put on description so people understand this is more like our resident only, and we only pay $25 for community service per meeting.
We will be sure, Councilmember Wu, to make sure that that is clarified and communicated as appropriate. So thank you for your comment. Next slide, please. I believe Commissioner Gutierrez is still here, so I'd like to invite you to come back down. I know you have some remarks that you would like to share.
Okay, so I'm proud to support this program. I saw this program in the city of Downey by the Downey Police Department implementing this program. So I believe West Covina will become either the fort or fifth city to implement this sticker program. And I'm proud to get the program sponsored fully by myself to provide all the stickers and necessary forms to our public. And I thank our police chief. I thank our Mayor Castellanos and Councilmember Wu for encouraging me to develop this program for our community. And so it's a sticker program that alerts officers of someone, a person with special needs lives in the household. You could put the sticker on your front door. If there's privacy concerns, you could put it inside a house on the person's room door. So it's really up to you where you want to put the sticker. It's absolutely free, and you could get it at the police lobby. And so that's the basis of the program. And we really wanted to create awareness in our community for any disability or any, or for seniors who have a, sometimes it's hard for them to speak or talk. It allows them to have a sticker on their front windshield, front door, or the car door, and it just creates awareness. So that's the program. Thank you.
We'd also like to invite the public to continue the conversation regarding the city of West Covina's budget. We have our next budget workshop scheduled for tomorrow, May 4, 6:30 PM, at the Cortez Park Community and Senior Center. This is the second of two meetings. The first meeting was held back on April 20 here at the council chambers. So again, the community is invited, encouraged to provide feedback and give input regarding the budget. Last slide, please. We're also asking the community to save the dates for a couple upcoming events for this summer, the first of which is going to be our Independence Day Street Fair and Heroes Parade, which is scheduled for July 4. And then we're also asking the community to mark off several dates for our summer concert lineup, beginning June 22 and ending on July 27, taking place from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. This is a Wednesday night concert series. We are excited to be bringing you the lineup shortly. And that concludes the city manager's report for this evening. Thank you.
You, Ms. Lerma. That moves us to the consent calendar part of the agenda. Council, is there anything you'd like to pull from the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve Consent Calendar Items 1 through 6?
I'll motion.
Got a?
Second.
And a second, first from Councilwoman Leti Lopez Viado, second by Councilmember Tabatabai.
Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Castellanos?
Aye.
Consent Calendar passes 5-0. Moving on to item number seven, Transit Service Evaluation. Ms. Lerma, who will present the report?
Mayor Castellanos, members of the city council, I would like to ask Assistant City Manager Paulina Morales to introduce our contractor who will be giving the consultant, I'm sorry, the consultant who will be giving tonight's presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Steve Wilks, who's coming down, will be providing the presentation. This presentation does take into account the feedback that you guys provided at the last council meeting. So it'll be providing some options for you to consider.
Thank you, Paulina. Again, I'm Steve Wilks with IBI Group, and it's a pleasure to be back, speaking with you. This evening, I want to share with you a number of options or scenarios that we developed based on our discussion last day in terms of a number of suggestions from council that talked of custom services, expanded, the prospect of expanded microtransit, mobility hubs, things of that nature. So we've prepared almost a list that's somewhat of a à la carte nature in terms of some 15 different scenarios that range from shuttle bus restructuring to the introduction of microtransit in various areas of the city to weekend downtown shuttles that are more event, you know, fun, play-e type scenarios, to dial-a-ride and dial-a-ride plus, all of these. And recognizing there's some 15 different elements here, we also took those and developed what we refer to as three optional service packages. The first being more of a transit focus that speaks to revamping the Go West Shuttle services and the Dial-a-Ride, the service specifically for older adults and people with disabilities. A second service package that speaks to more of a hybrid in terms of enhancements to the shuttle, introduction of microtransit, and maintaining the Dial-a-Ride services. And the third being microtransit focused in terms of citywide microtransit, both Monday to Friday and introduction of some weekend service, as well as maintaining the Dial-a-Ride services. So based on those packages, as mentioned, cost estimates were also developed for A, each of the 15 different options, and B, specifically for each of the three packages I just mentioned. And I'm going to spend a minute going through the key elements of each of those packages. But they were all designed within a framework of about this $1.8 million budget. So that said, when looking at Package 1, that I talked of being more transit-focused, the revamping of the Go West Shuttle and Dial-a-Ride, there's six key elements to this package. The first being restructuring the Go West Shuttle red line, in essence, combining the blue-red lines into one route, excuse me, and a new alignment. Restructuring the green line as well so that it provides enhanced coordination with existing foothill routes and provides that connectivity for more of a seamless travel in terms of serving the south end of the city and connectivity to foothill. Maintaining the current service level of the Dial-a-Ride service. The fifth element is introducing something that we're calling this Weekend, Weekender Downtown Shuttle, would operate Friday nights, all day Saturday, all day Sunday, and provide frequent service to key attractors or generators in terms of anchors. And I'll speak more of that. This package also includes what we're calling custom services, similar to, you know, the events that have been held in the past with remote parking shuttles for festivals and community events. And finally, the last element of this package is that of the design and development of a select number of mobility hubs. So when I talked about those six elements that go into Package 1, the first was restructuring the red line, new alignment, touching on, again, key attractors, generators that include Eastland Center, Azusa Retail, a couple of the high schools, the West Covina Plaza, hospitals, Kaiser Permanente, and the Hong Kong Plaza. Increase the frequency to 30 minutes and provide service from 6:30 in the morning to 7:00 PM, to 7:00 in the evening. And that would also target sort of the commuter traffic, commuter travelers as well. The second element is that of restructuring the green line, restructure to complement foothill transit lines in the city. And again, that restructuring is designed around input that we heard from council and certainly from the community in terms of the key destinations and attractors. And they include, again, the Plaza West Covina, Lake Small, Cameron Park, high schools, the Sportplex, Target, Shadow Park, and, well, again, I mentioned the high schools. Also, to increase it to a 30-minute frequency in same hours in terms of the 6:30 AM to 7:00 PM span of service. Third element is that of maintaining the Dial-a-Ride service, your transport for older adults, people with disabilities at the current level. Continue to provide citywide, for most trip purposes, going beyond the city up to the 5-mile for medical appointments. This service, again, requires advanced booking, advanced reservations, and is provided Monday to Friday. The other element of this package, as I mentioned, is this Weekender Downtown Shuttle. This one's really exciting in terms of, you know, an opportunity for providing what ought to be branded as a fun mode of public transit for key attractors and generators, typically those of entertainment and hospitality, including Civic Center, West Covina Parkway, the malls, South Glendora Ave, and Hong Kong Plaza. Providing this kind of shuttle with a 15 to 20-minute headway. You really want to reduce wait times and provide more of that spontaneity of travel and provide it for Friday evenings, all day Saturday, and all day Sundays. Custom service, again, speaks to having transportation that supports community and economic development objectives in terms of key events, key festivals, providing remote parking shuttles with the Spring Festival, July 4th Fest celebrations, farmers markets, certainly events at the Sportplex, things of that nature. And finally, the defining and developing a series of mobility hubs. Have identified four key candidate sites in terms of the Civic Center, West Covina Plaza, and the mall, South Glendora Ave, Eastland Center, and South Azusa. And the mobility hubs, again, would have that transit focus while complementing other, you know, typical land uses, whether it's the retail or entertainment, hospitality-type events within those immediate areas. From a transit mobility perspective, certainly provides that connectivity to other higher-order transit services like select number of foothill routes. So Package Number 2 is what we refer to as hybrid as it relates to transit, introducing microtransit and a couple of scenarios within that definition and maintaining the Dial-a-Ride services. So when we talk about hybrid transit, we're speaking to restructuring the red line that I spoke to a moment ago, but replacing the green line with microtransit south of Cameron Avenue. And the only exception in terms of the south of Cameron is the Senior Center, just sitting north of. And that would be a south-side microtransit service. We're also looking at an opportunity to expand services for older adults, people with disabilities, what we're calling Dial-a-Ride Plus. And this would include providing or providing, well, supplementing the Dial-a-Ride with things like e-hailing services as well as expanding into weekend service. This package also includes the Weekender Downtown, custom services, and the mobility hub. So I just want to speak to some of the unique elements of Package 2. I wasn't going to go through the restructuring of the red line again, or the mobility hubs and things of that nature. So when I talk about the south-side microtransit, it speaks, again, to replacing the existing green line with on-demand microtransit and subsidized TNC, Transportation Network Company, type services or taxi e-hailing. And it also implies leveraging the appropriate technologies for this kind of deployment. And all that means is, you know, the respective platforms for customers to be able to request a vehicle, have mobile payment, get real-time customer information, arrival info, that kind of thing would be an integral part of the on-demand microtransit service. So this speaks to providing direct origin-todestination travel anywhere within the microtransit zone. Providing connectivity, first-last-mile connections, to foothill transit bus lines for travel outside the zone. And the service delivery really blends contractor-operated microtransit with supplemental service providers, subsidized TNC taxi trips. This service, within the parameters that we've identified in terms of generating ridership and hourly rates and things of that nature, speaks to introducing it Monday to Friday from about 6:30 in the morning to 7:00. It, again, would match the level of service provided the north side of the city with the restructuring of the red line. And then when I spoke to Dial-a-Ride Plus, as I mentioned, it's the Dial-a-Ride service supplemented by contracted user-choice-type services through the use of transportation network companies or taxi companies for e-hailing. It also looks at, or suggests, the expansion of Dial-a-Ride to include weekend service. So certainly, in the financial estimates have identified an increased number of service hours as well as monies for the subsidizing of TNC or taxi e-hailing type trips. And then the third package is that of a stronger focus on citywide microtransit and Dial-a-Ride. So the unique features of this are the introduction of citywide weekend, weekday and weekend service for microtransit, the Dial-a-Ride Plus that I mentioned a moment ago, and the use of the custom services, remote parking. So when we talk about the citywide microtransit, it replaces the fixed route shuttles with on-demand microtransit and subsidized. on-demand microtransit and subsidized TNC and taxi e-hailing services for direct service anywhere in the city, direct travel, the first mile, first-last mile connectivity to Foothill Transit bus lines and MetroLink for travel to neighboring cities. And service delivery blends the contractor-operator microtransit with subsidized TNC taxi trips. So the coverage is citywide, on-demand, and would be weekday service with a level of service, hours of service or span identical to what's currently being provided with the Go West Shuttle services. Complementing that weekday service for microtransit, this just speaks to, you know, supplementing it with evening and weekend service. So again, in essence, you'd now be operating citywide microtransit with these combined options under Package 3. Seven days a week, weekday service would extend from 6:30 in the morning to 11:00 in the evenings, and weekend service from 8:00 AM to 11:00 on Saturdays, and 9:00 to 8:00 AM on Sundays. So with that, do you want to?
Sure. So we're looking for your direction on the selection of one of the packages or a combination thereof. As Steve mentioned, I think the budget is 1.7 million that we have to stick to for these services.
Could you put them back on the screen, please?
Do you actually have those three packages all on one side?
Maybe this screen as well, please.
Oh.
I need some binoculars for that.
It wasn't included, that, in our packet, so.
I think IT has to do that.
IT, switch camera down here, please.
Will? Sorry.
We can't see it.
So, there it is. Okay. So the first package revamped to go to the West Covina Shuttles and the Dial-A-Ride is 1.777 million. The hybrid Package 2 is 1.79 million. And then the last one, which is the microtransit and Dial-A-Ride, is 1.7 million.
There's a few things that I like from each package.
Councilwoman Wu, please.
I know this is not from our general fund, right? This is from the major A money, gas tax money.
You were correct.
There are three different funds, are there not, that this comes from?
There's various. I know Kelly can.
So this is basically is not from general fund.
Correct.
So this is something from our subsidy from major A and gas and another, I don't know, some subsidy money. So we want to see, we don't want to, even this is not from our general fund, we don't want to waste the money. But at the same time, it looked pretty exciting based on your presentation, okay, and the trolley, downtown attract tourists like Glendora if they have land, possible can attract people. But can I, you want to go first, or you want me to ask questions?
No, well, like I mentioned, there's a few takeaways. I do appreciate this. Thank you very much for expanding this program. There's, well, first, I know you showed the Weekend Downtown Shuttle. Would the look of the shuttle be similar to a trolley, same as the photo that was shown on here?
The photos were just to give you guys an idea.
But would they change the whole look of the shuttle itself?
We would have to go to an RFP for those services and then include the kind of transit vehicle that the council would like, which would impact the price of the contract.
Okay. The key destinations, I do, I do like, I can't see, I wish I had it here. Can you pull it back up, please? Thank you.
It's, it's.
It's good, it's there, it's there. Thank you. So the red line and the green line, they are, they're both going to be, okay, they're both in the same package. I mean, I personally do like the weeknight and weekends and the custom, but I also do like that the change of the red line and the green line is hitting our key destination. Sorry. No, go ahead, you can ask your question. I'm just kind of still browsing through.
Yes, Councilwoman, go ahead.
Okay, I have a couple of questions, okay. The first question would be, I see the north-south, the green line, okay, that basically from Azusa, right? Green line.
Yeah, the green one is gonna, yeah, exactly. It's pretty much starts on the south side all the way up.
Yeah, it will go all to the valley, and it go up to the border, you see?
It does not go on Azusa.
You see the green go to the Valley Boulevard right there, at the end, at the tip of our border, based on your graphic map?
But it does not go along Azusa.
Huh?
It does not go along Azusa.
So how you go to the Sportplex?
Oh, sorry, it does go a portion of it, but this line right here is Azusa, sorry, here's Azusa, and it's just a portion of it.
So Azusa will be using the Foothill Transit? Because we want to connect the MetroLink in Covina on Azusa, and then we go to Gole Line, okay, or city of Azusa, on Azusa Avenue. You have a Gole Line, Covina MetroLink, and West Covina and 10 Freeway, and then you have, so that's how people willing to take this bus and go to the connection to downtown of LA to work, right? So your design should have some connection, that's last time we asked, to connection and possible single night traffic on Azusa. So, okay, and then my next question would be, do you have the horizontal from those hotel on Restaurant Row and move those people or player go to Sportplex? So in that way, okay, and then they can have a transportation, taking the bus, go to Sportplex, okay, because we, right now, we fixing the Sportplex, and it's going to book with all the player, and possible the traveling, okay, league, they are going to book the hotel.
They stay there.
Yeah. So they stay there as a bunch of kid, and then the transportation, easier way is they have a bus stop right there, utilize, and then move then the horizontal, then go to, okay, and vertical into Sportplex. That's how you connect them. This is all the important, okay, and attraction, right?
Both options do include shuttle services to the Sportplex.
And how would that work with the details there?
If you want to go into it. Steve?
Well, so I guess there's a couple of elements here in terms of, yes, they include access to the Sportplex on an event-specific basis in terms of possibly, you know, teams from a hotel to the fields, Sportplex, that could be under the custom program.
Not a, not a regular program?
What was allocated to custom, 80,000?
My, my understanding.
And then the connectivity to the Foothill for the higher-order transit would be done through the mobility hubs in terms of providing that connection as opposed to any of these services serving directly a MetroLink station, for example.
No, okay, I think I'm kind of confused. Our design is how we, is called a transportation action plan for West Covina, is how we move people around, they're willing to use the mass transportation. So we base on our attraction, like our hospital, school, park, Sportplex, and south side and north side, how we connect them together, easy for people to move around, they don't have to drive, they just hop in into the bus, and that's why we have you to design, okay, why it's convenient. And I'm, my understanding, when the Sportplex, couple years ago, five years ago, when they are busy, they're playing the ball game all the time, and they're leaving on the Restaurant Row Hotel. So if we can have a convenient of transportation, would be much easier, attract people to utilize the transportation and move those kid into our Sportplex. Makes sense? Right, not just for special events. Sportplex, not only for special events, Sportplex basically will play regularly with a six-ball, okay, baseball field, and then they have indoor soccer field. We maybe do some special events sometime during, sometime, and, okay, but supposedly it's a Sportplex. Okay, let me finish my thing, okay. So, so can you answer how you connect this together to make it more convenient, okay, that people willing to hop in? Remember, we talking about three things, safety, convenient, and attraction, right? You need to convenient for people to utilize, that can connect people together. And second thing is the safety, that's safe to take the bus. Number three is attraction with some design or design land, but the convenience is the first priority, it need be convenient, that people can move from here to there, okay, and it's convenient for people to go to their attraction. Makes sense?
Yes, absolutely. So the restructured green line has the spur element on Azusa to the Sport, to the Sportplex. We're looking at 30-minute frequency in terms of, you know, the 30-minute headways, which we deemed, you know, convenient and attractive, and similarly provides, in a single-seat ride on the green line, service to a number of other key attractors or destinations to be served, including mobility hubs that provide an option for, or an opportunity to transfer to higher-order services. Foothill.
Yeah, okay, Steve, okay, sorry, I forgot your name, I have to ask her wrong. What's his name, okay. So anyway, Mr. Steve, okay, my question will be, all this attraction, including, it's not they over there only go to Sportplex, they go there to one stop, this stop, they go to the South Hill Plaza, possible one stop, and they go to Sportplex, maybe another stop, and they go to down south side, Longgale High School, maybe another stop, and they go to south side to the Shadow Oak around the neighborhood, maybe another stop. So they have a stop. So people choose which stop they get off. It's not like we only design for one location to go to one location. No, it should be designed, okay, the stop, and all this shopping mall should be a stop for people to hop in, okay, and utilize if they want to go to the park, or they want to go to the shopping mall, and then maybe attract more people, the ridership. So this is my suggestion to convenient for people to go to the attraction location, a destination, and from there, they can walk to, like, for example, South Hill Plaza, behind have a residential, they can just from there get off, and then they walk into their residential, and the convenient for them to go hop in the bus and go to on the Azusa. So anyway, this is, my thinking about this would be your design to, like last time, we talked about how to connect to attraction together. And in that way, possible, we can have a more convenient for people to take the bus. Makes sense?
Yes. So when we talk about the re, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to say, when we spoke to, you know, the restructuring of the green line to provide that north-south access to complement, in essence, the rest of the grid being provided by Foothill, touches upon some of the key attractors or generators that I think you had mentioned, including the Plaza West Covina, Lakes Mall, Cameron Park, West Covina High School, a couple of the high schools, the Sportplex, and provides that connectivity between a number of, you know, key destinations along the route.
Anyway, I want to ear my time, but I just, my suggestion is, we have a, it's a huge area, we have all different attraction, hospital and the Plaza West Covina, Restaurant Row, and then you have mid-size of, okay, LA, no, Plaza, South Hill Plaza, and then you go to the Sportplex, then you go to the Sifu Plaza, then you go to the CVS Plaza, Longgale High School, then you go south to Freddie Hill and Park. So you basically, from north and south, that is our attraction, and when you design, you should see how we connect all this stuff, including the high school and the park in the middle, so you decide the stop, okay, and connect them, because that's how people want to go. Right?
Yes, and so what is being proposed for this package is realigning the blue and the red kind of along the north, and then realigning the green line, and then part of the options too is to have transit hubs where you can get off and on from either the green line to the revised red line, I believe. And so you can, essence, go from Eastland Center, stop at the plaza, get on the green, on the red line, and then get on from plaza on the green line and take it to the Sportplex. So it's two separate lines, and I think part of that is to.
But.
The frequency of shuttles lower.
Steve says Sportplex only for special event, he didn't say we have.
Not on the realignment of the, the green line. It's on here, I'm sorry, we can make it.
Yeah, he says a special event, and it doesn't have a regular stop. Do you have a regular stop, Steve?
Yes, it does.
Okay, then.
Right here.
So they can connect from the hotel on the, the red line, and then they go to, connect with the green line.
Yes.
Go to the south.
Correct. Or depending if there's a huge tournament or something, we could provide a shuttle service directly from the hotels to the Sportplex. So those would be different options.
Yeah, I'm just want to see the regular route. Special event is easy to have them to do it, but we talk about the regular route, how we move people, so we can make the places more popular, we can have people to willing to go there and help the crowd for the neighborhood. I hear my time, thank you.
Anybody else have questions? Councilman Tabatai? And can we get the options on screen again, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Can, can you go more into kind of how the, the mobility hubs kind of function and work together? Because I, I thought the, the way I understood it, right, you had a mobility hub on the row in Eastland, right? And so I guess the way I was picturing it would be, we have all these teams at that hotel, they would go to those mobility, to the mobility hub around Eastland, and then they would be able to catch transit every about 30 minutes.
Correct.
And that, that also has a mobility hub over there by the Sportplex. Is that, is that kind of how it would be functioning, or can you, can you explain kind of, right, how the, the ridership gets around town, how these mobility hubs connect with each other?
Okay, so this, a select number of mobility hubs would be, in essence, transit centers where a number of different routes may converge in terms of, as it relates to the West Covina services, the red and the green, but as well as the connectivity to Foothill. So they'd be, you know, placed in strategic locations that meet the higher-order public transit. And then, you know, they would also typically have customer-friendly amenities, benches, maybe kiosks to provide, you know, variable message signs, real-time information, your bus will be here in seven minutes, that kind of thing. So again, it's, it's really to enhance the customer experience and provide the connectivity to, with, you know, multiple services. And depending, again, on, on the wishes of council and looking at microtransit-type solutions, they too could, could use for loading disembarking passengers at the mobility hub, as could the Dial-A-Ride services, persons with, you know, older adults, people with disabilities that wanted to use Dial-A-Ride maybe for the first-last mile from their home to a mobility hub, at which point they may be able to board the red or green line. to a mobility hub, at which point they may be able to board the red or green line.
Okay, so, so then, i- if I understand right, so, so like at these mobility hubs too, we can, you know, kind of target who, you know, so let's say at the hotels, right, we, we constantly have tournaments and we go fifty-two weeks a year, the sportsplex, and those hotels are filled with teams. At the mobility hub, at the, that Eastland Row area, you could really have some targeted things, you know, for, knowing that we're gonna have these teams there, right? These, these are the, the times of these shuttles that are going to the sportsplex. Teams would know when, when to show up there. Um, I mean, you could even have the scores of games pop up on these screens and things like that. Um, right, or however we wanted to target. So, okay.
Correct. It's, it's a place with enhanced customer amenities where teams could, you know, congregate to board a shuttle bus.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Could you talk about the citywide micro-transit again, please? And go into detail on that.
So within, sure. There's, there's the two options, uh, in terms of citywide micro-transit. Option A was weekday, option B adds evening and weekend service. Citywide micro-transit would replace the existing shuttle services, uh, with on, general public on-demand micro-transit, mobility service.
For everyone, citywide, just on demand?
Correct.
Multiple options, okay. Yeah, I think that, that seems to be the best option that I like, that would offer the most flexibility, flexibility with fewest limitations. Okay, any, any questions from council members? Councilman Wu.
Uh, you know, this is such of a lot of information to digest, okay? And I just don't want to rush this thing and right away decide the route. I think the route need to be a little bit more attention to see, yes, exactly. So, uh, I, we really want to have a, a much better transportation action plan for our city, for all people willing to take the mass transportation. And I think that this pandemic is kind of coming and end, hopefully, and then people are willing to take the, the buses, okay? And how can we use it, attraction and convenience and safety, okay, for them to hop in, okay? And then to go to places rather than drive their car, okay? I think this is something we, we need to make sure your design on the bus stop, and that then we need to, maybe our current carrier to share results, how they think, give us some input, and then we can combine together, find the best solution. We cannot get it perfect, but at least we can get something that we can taking care of the need of our resident, no matter they, uh, senior or the student, or some people cannot drive or people doesn't want to drive, they all have a chance to utilize this thing to move them around.
And what was dial-a-ride plus again?
The existing dial-a-ride services, same level of service. The plus component is supplementing that with a, what we refer to as a consumer choice program. Registrants for the dial-a-ride, customers of the dial-a-ride, uh, for maybe some of their trips, some of the time they could request or, or e-hail a TNC or taxi. Uh, and similar with plus, we're suggesting expanding into weekend service.
Councilman Tabatai?
Can, can you, uh, show the, the slide that, um, had the, the, the second option? Um, and, and can you explain? Because that, that one was like a mixture, right? With micro-transit and the, yeah, can, can you kind of go into a little more detail? This one, this one has micro-transit, okay? So the micro-transit on the south side, can, I think, can you maybe, um, talk about this one? Because this is, I think, a mixture of, of kind of what, uh, the mayor is looking at, and then also, um, what Councilman Wu and, and I think I are, are, you know, um, thinking. Can you, can you speak to this one?
So you're absolutely correct. It's that mixture, the, the hybrid of restructuring the red line, uh, replacing the green line with micro-transit south of Cameron. So there would no, there would not be any fixed route, fixed scheduled service south of Cameron, and it would be one big micro-transit zone. On-demand service for the general public, they would phone up to make a trip request or go to an app and, and do it, you know, in that kind of e-hailing digital type mode, could use the same app for payment and things of that nature. It would serve, you know, you could go anywhere within this zone, uh, would typically be, well, on-demand, so, so you would target for, uh, anywhere from twelve to fifteen-minute uh, response time. So you would have the on-demand micro-transit as well as subsidized taxis, TNCs, uh, e-hailing.
And, and so the, the decision to, to continue with the, the red and, and, and blue line, right, the restructuring of that, um, what, what was the, the rationale for that? And why was the, the green line and, and the south side viewed as the, the opportunity to just go total micro-transit? Can, can you kind of explain the thinking there?
Sure. Uh, when we looked at sort of the deeper dive into ridership and looked at it by route, and then more recently by route segment in terms of data that provided on-off counts and, and things of that nature, and just looked at how the routes were performing in terms of, you know, productivity and expense, in terms of revenue hours being expended in, in that delivery. The red line and, and the recommendations for, for restructuring it, or, or suggestions for restructuring, uh, can be viable in terms of generating ridership and getting, uh, the productivity numbers and in essence, better value for money. Uh, the green line wasn't performing as, as admirably and, and hence, you know, a couple of different scenarios for restructuring or replacing.
Councilman Wu? You know, when you give us so many options, it's become very confusing, okay? I don't know, where should we pick here, pick this, that, okay? And, and you give a lot of theory thing. Um, what I want to see is the dots. Where is the bus stop? Where connected, how you connect them? Okay, I, I prefer to see how you where the bus stop, and then where's next stop, and then where's next stop, and how we connect them. So I, I prefer want to see beside just a line, I want to see how many stop on that line. Okay, and, and then, okay, okay, and how convenient for move people to connect all those dot? How long it take to connect the dot? How you move from people from West Run Road Hotel and go down south to the sportsplex? How many dot they have to connect? How many chances they have to get off and go to change into green, green line? And how do, how convenient to connect that thing? If that possible, okay? And how we move people, okay, to the stop to school or stop to the park with all your red line to the, okay, Plaza West Covina? Where's the stop and where's the hub? And, uh, okay, how you use the hub? Okay, and to realistically, that can be executed. Okay, so, so this is my suggestion. And at the same time, I want to hear our current carrier for this suggestion, okay, and combine all this together, and then maybe we can continue to see something more detail that will come out, give us something, okay? That, that would be feasible and convenient and not going to overblown with a bunch of budget, even we don't pay for it, but we still want to see the effectiveness of using the mass transportation.
Well, that's why I like the third option, because it's fully customizable and fully, like, on-demand. But we, we do, I think we need a little bit more of an opportunity to, to see, you know, from anyone's perspective, all the scenarios, what if I'm here, want to move here? What if someone wants to move wherever? All the permutations we could think of, just to make sure that any choice that's made makes sense.
So, so if we can, I'm, I'm sorry, Steve.
Go ahead.
If we can have a little bit more detail, okay? And, uh, something that's, okay, like what I'm saying many times, okay? And you're talking about nighttime with a trolley, this and that weekend, okay? And where we move those trolley and how many stop, okay? Where to where, where this and that, a little bit more detail, okay? And then give us to the lead design, and at least we can build on something that we know how we get into it. Either we do number three, number two, or something, at least we, we, we want to do the best for the, our resident, but at the same time, we want to see how feasible and how, the, the, how attractive possible we using maybe number two or something, maybe not even one, two, three, maybe something with a new design.
Be a little bit tweaked.
More tweaked, let's tweak, let's tweak to realistic.
Yeah, I think, I think we're, we're almost there, I, I think is what, what I hear, and I agree. I mean, it's kind of difficult to just pull the trigger and decide right now with having been presented with these images just this evening. I think we needed ahead of time and, and really to digest the possibilities, make sure any of the options don't run out of funds, make sure any of the options offer all the possibilities for any of the residents of all ages, all parts of the city. So it sounds like we.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I, I think we need to get the detail, okay? And they can present to us, okay? And if we can listen to some of their suggestion.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good addition.
Yeah, they are operator, they know. And the last question I have, how much we spend the budget previously? Right now, the suggestion is one point seven nine, one point seven. So why is the previous budget?
Good question.
Kelly, how much do we spend on our current contract? I think it's one point three million.
I thought it was about three. Are you sure?
One point three eight.
One point three eight.
One point three eight previously, now we go to one point seven something. And if we can get this thing done, so we can maybe provide a little bit better service, okay? And, uh, but since we have to, and all this money, if we approve, we can get all this budget from the grant. Right, Carrie? Carrie? There should be.
It's all local return money.
So basically, okay, no matter how we approve it, the money will come to us? Are you sure? So we have a, we have a, we have a blank check?
Not a blank.
No, I'm kidding, no, 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 no. But at least we can have a chance, we approve with one of this, one point seven, that, that we can get the money in. But we still want to wisely use the money, okay? Even this enough on general fund. So do you have them to come up?
Yeah, let's, let's have our current operator come to the microphone, please.
Thank you, Kelly.
Oh, Councilman Tabatai? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I did have a, a question. I, I think one of my concerns with the micro-transit is, um, the deadheading and, and the added traffic, it, it, it's added, um, you know, with, with cities that have gone to Uber and Lyft. And that south side, there, there's some areas of very heavy traffic. Did, did you look at that and consider what, what it would do to, to traffic on, on the south side? The increasing micro-transit and, and the issues with deadheading and things?
So just to be clear, when you're looking at micro-transit, you know, that's where you may enter into an agreement with a contractor to provide the hourly service for on-demand, similar to what you're doing currently with the dial-a-ride service. There's set hours. When you're looking at the TNCs or taxis, what many agencies or what many cities find attractive about that is you're only paying for services consumed. If there's nobody in the vehicle, it doesn't cost.
No, no, I'm not.
No deadheading.
Right, no, well, but, but when, when cities contract with Uber and Lyft, Uber and Lyft drivers circle around in, in the areas creating the traffic. And, and that, that was, so I, I wanna, I'm asking if that was part of the calculus when, when looking at, especially when option B is talking about the south side being micro-transit. So if we're gonna increase the number of Uber and Lyft, right, providers that understand, hey, this is a micro-transit area, are we, are we gonna increase, uh, traffic? So I'm, I'm just interested to, to hear your, your, your opinion on that. Was that part of when, when you were developing the plan? Because that, that would be a concern, right? I want to move people, but I don't want to put things in the way of the people who are used to moving on, on their own either.
No. No, and point well taken, because when we profiled each of the fifteen options and then the packages, have identified a level of service, revenue hours, ridership estimates, cost per hour, cost per passenger, subsidy per passenger, those kind of things. What we've prepared to date are concepts to provide strategic direction. The next step, when, when, you know, we determine the package or which options are, are to be deployed, is to prepare a more detailed deployment plan. Getting into those details that might include everything from stop locations as well as providing a commentary on net impacts. Because you raise a great point that, you know, these e-hailing services may be very attractive for cities, it could be cost-effective, but they do not reduce vehicle miles traveled, VMTs, uh, may have a negative impact on other environmental considerations, not just traffic congestion, but, well, the, the, the streets, but, but also the climate and, you know, carbon footprint and, and things of that nature. And that's also very real. There's some strategies that could be used to mitigate part of that impact in terms of encouraging ride sharing within those TNCs and, and taxis, and through these kind of travel demand strategies, uh, to, to again, enhance ride sharing. So you're carrying, and that would then have a net impact on a reduction of VMTs.
Okay.
Councilman Wu?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, uh, I, I want to follow up the traffic, okay? I know, I know the traffic is for you, Azusa, you make a left turn to Ema, and that is the traffic, the issue. And then you have another traffic potentially issue is you want to make a left turn, go to sportsplex. And that, that lie, that lane is short. So if people want to go to the sportsplex to have a game, and they drive by themselves, and it's going to create potentially traffic jam. So I think the original idea with the transportation action plan is try to reduce the traffic and let people to use the mass transportation. And that's why we're here. So, so the design of this bus stop become pretty important that people are willing to take this transit or this mass transportation. Like you go to sportsplex, whether you're driving over there, you, you, you have, um, transportation move them from hotel to there, while then you're driving a bunch of car to move those people into the sportsplex and maybe waiting the left, left, left line, left turn line and stuck over there forever and they continue to ooze out to Azusa. And same thing, uh, how we use the mass transportation to move people to the south side, to the Longgalls High School, okay? And to the shopping mall right there, and, and, and using mass transportation to move people with convenient. And that will reduce the traffic rather than everybody drive to go there. So, so I think that's why the design to convenience with the stop, okay? And, um, it become important, okay? And that's why I really prefer to see how you design the stop, where's the hub, okay? And the, the, the location, and then we can listen to operator, they talk about, is that feasible possibility to do something like this? Okay, I'm done, thank you.
MB Transit, would you come up, please, to comment?
Thank you, good to see you guys tonight, Judy Smith. Uh, this is the first time I'm seeing the presentation as well. It's a lot to digest, and I'm in, from the transportation industry, so I know you guys are chapping some challenges. But I, I'd just like to say that, uh, you know, I'm dating myself, but, you know, twenty years ago or more, we had a lot of, uh, somewhat on-demand para-transit services that was for the general public. And, uh, systems reverted to getting people who's, who's able-bodied off of the para-transit side, because it can be very expensive when you open up a service for riders who can go anywhere they want to go, on-demand, give a call, then you, you know, you get more people who are gonna ride, but that can actually blow, you know, budgets. Uh, we know the city of Monrovia had a challenge when they went and opened up their full service. We know the city of Monrovia had a challenge when they went and opened up their full service to a microtransit program. It was too successful, so they had to potentially limit rider, number of rides a person can take and all of those kind of things. Because so the budget is can be, can can explode when you offer that. But in looking at the presentation today, it's very, it's quite a few different options. I actually work with the city of Los Angeles on a microtransit program. It's a little different how the microtransit is set up, you know, but I can talk to the team here and just talk about it that where it may help to mitigate some of the potential budget challenges with just opening it up where anywhere you want to go. People want to use like an Uber app. And so what happens with that? You're going to get everyone wanting to ride the service at the same time. You know, kids going to school or wherever they need to go, it 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 can be a challenge. So I just wanted to say that, you know, the lot of, it's a lot of information here, a lot of options that, like you stated, we can pull from one another. But I'm willing to sit down and talk with the with the team and to say, you know, what, what, you know, from our our vantage point, from the operating side, what potentially could, you know, to be one of the best best solutions to kind of package to have you guys take a look at. Because it is a lot, and each each one has elements that are are good. I know the sportsplex is is a big component of that. Councilman Wu, I know that you 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 get, every time you get an opportunity, you you plug the sportsplex because there's so much going to be happening there. But I think that we can work together and take a look at it. But it's it's a, it's a lot of information, it has a lot of implications. I know the budgets are kind of aligned here, but there's a potential when you don't have some form of control over over the ridership and how that's going to work, that can 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 get out of hand pretty, pretty fast. Because people are used to using Uber, they want to use it right now and go where I want to go within the city with no, no, no limitations on 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 part of it. But there's still that fixed route component in one of the recommendations, which I thought was good to to help control that. So we just have to take a look at it in more detail. That's, those are, those are my comments.
Thank you for your contribution, any questions?
So we're going to, are we tabling this? And is this something that you and Steve are going to work on with this project?
Yes, that would be great.
For the next council meeting?
We could choose what what direction we want to give, yeah, to to continue this. Yeah, so if I understood Steve correctly, this is the point where we're going to kind of pick something and give direction as to getting more detail.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
No, and I I will support, okay, and the councilwoman, Nati Viadot, to have our current operator, because they've been operate the city, okay, to work with.
But remember, they're empty. And the point of this is to stop them from being empty. And I think the Monrovia example that you just referenced, it blew up and and busted the budget for good reason, because that's what people want.
That's right, no, that's, that's no doubt.
That's why, that's why we let them to discuss, to see which one and bring to us, and we decide which which one will be the best for our decision. So so I think, okay, and maybe have them to put their input, okay? And then to have our team, okay, and bring table it and or continue it and bring back to us. Okay, at least we have time to digest, we just wait to many information.
Yeah, we 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 need to, we need to have more detail.
Yeah, we need a detail. Right now, just wait, just even you have a problem to digest. Nevertheless, we are a bunch of amateur, so we.
It's a lot of information.
A lot of information.
Yes, and I do, I do have just a note for our company out of Dallas. We have a gentleman who works for us, who actually was part of the team that led the first microtransit project in the nation, probably the largest one out of Dallas, Texas. So I will engage him to participate in this process too, because he helped develop it from the ground up, so he knows comes the pitfalls. So we'll, we'll definitely work with with staff and consultant to to do that, talk about that.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I do like the microtransit, but on certain situations, for example, like the, all the hotels where they have everybody playing baseball, it's, would be great for them to be all shuttled in together as a group and shifted, same thing with like the high schools. They're all, you know, out at the same time, shuttle them all through. So there's different components that works well, but yes, of course, the microtransit is popular. I mean, everybody wants that on-demand to go. But on certain situation, it is nice to get that that group going, which.
Right.
And then the the hub centers that, I mean, I'd like to see what that comprises of and it looks like for those high, high participants that utilize it. So those are the two things that I.
So that, I think that would be the the custom part of the options, like the groups you just mentioned.
Or like the seniors, group seniors.
Go ahead.
Part of it tonight was the presentation of the three packages. If we can get direction, maybe in which one you'd like, doesn't mean that we can't come back to it and amend it to an option that you want. It does allow us for go into deeper detail about where those stops are going to be, what that transit hub is going to look like, how it's going to possibly impact traffic. So you, selecting an option today doesn't mean we're going to have to stick to those.
I I really have a hard time to digest for these three options.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
I I I really struggling with let just receive and with the number, okay? I I prefer I can spend some time and with my suggestion, I don't want to rush this thing. I know maybe Mayor like prefer number three, maybe number three is a good one.
Well, I think that we should get details on all three options, like pretty in-depth.
Awesome, yeah, I agree. If 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 looking some detail, much easier for us to to decide. But why not just dump to us with all this information? We have to right away make a decision like one, two, three, okay? It's impossible, and we might rush and make a mistake.
And if we could get that, all that presentation in our packet, so we could read.
Yes, it would be very helpful.
We don't have that, and we will have make a decision.
We will definitely include the presentation before the next, or attached to the staff report.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so thank you for your contribution. And I think that's the direction that we have unanimously to get details on all three options. And thank you for the input you could provide. We, I think, as you know, we we want the best option for residents to really get ridership and people movement in the most effective manner.
Got it.
And then Mayor is very passionate about this. He really, including us, we don't want to see empty buses running around the city like a ghost bus, and it's really waste, okay? And we all agree, and that's why we spend time trying to see how can we design something that we can attract people. And now we understand it's a pandemic, but at the same time, it's really waste to see the buses, including transits, okay? For here, transits like the big buses, empty, okay? And hopefully, with a new route, new attraction, and with new design with detail, and then we can make a decision a little bit, not speaking, true, it's not easy, but at least we can understand what we will vote for. And right now, I really don't know what to vote for, I'm really confused about all these three options. I have no idea what he talking about, okay? I say is that including here, is a no, including there, not really, but if over here, I lost. So I need more detail, okay, to make a decision, I do not just vote.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I add one thing? But option two, we talked about option two, I think is the best of both worlds. And with those, with those hubs and everything like that, but getting the detail, but you want to see all three. But option three, that's the full opened up microtransit component.
Is that full? I thought it was only half. Oh, two.
She said she prefers two.
Everything is all microtransit. That one probably will be the most challenging overall. Yes, yes, but option two is really good, I think. But anyway, those, those are my comments, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Do we need a motion for that, or? Okay, thank you. Yeah, yeah, that's, it'll be worthwhile homework.
Steve, you can do it.
Thank you, Steve.
You can do it, we have a confidence in you. And with their help, as a professional operator, we can have the best action plan the whole city will follow. Thank you.
And let's see here, that takes us to the final part of our our agenda. But before I move on to city council, request, comments and questions, I'd like our assistant city manager, Roxanne Lerm, I think you had something to add.
I do, thank you, Mayor. City Council, I just wanted to take a moment, and I wanted to apologize to Mr. Elliott for not acknowledging your comments earlier. So I do apologize for that. I also want to thank you for mentioning the work on the center medians along Azusa. The median beautification project is made possible through a cooperative agreement between the city of West Covina and the San Gabriel Valley Conservation Corps, which utilizes a youth employment program model. So again, I do apologize for not acknowledging you earlier this evening, so my apologies.
Thank you. And fellow council members, any reports, requests or comments? Councilwoman Lopez Viadot?
I just had a question in regards to the medians. Where are you at with getting the information of what's next, the deadline completion and so forth?
If I may, if I have a moment, I just pulling up an email because I received a status update this afternoon. What I can tell you, just a moment.
So the Azusa is completed? 100% complete?
No, it is not 100% complete. There are a total of 23 medians along Azusa that will, that are part of the scope of work. So where they are this week, they are ordering the plants for the island, for islands 11 through 16 of the 23 medians that are along Azusa. So the term of the contract actually ends in August. And we do have a scheduled meeting with the Conservation Corps coming up in order to provide both the council and the community members a a percentage of what has been completed versus what is still going to be worked on. Because we want to communicate that to the public and make that available to both the council and the public.
Great, that'd be great, we'd like to see that.
Absolutely.
Presented and have that information, as some residents were asking me about that as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you for that question. Any further questions or comments from our council, reports? Nope. Well, that takes us to the end, we are adjourned.